Good evening. I want to welcome everybody to the June 9 Williamson County Commissioner Meeting. As a reminder, please silence your cell phones. The first item on the agenda is the invocation and pledge delivered tonight by District 3 Commissioner Jennifer Mason. Please rise.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today with our hearts full of gratitude for the blessings of this community and for the opportunity to serve one another. Lord, we lift up our first responders and those serving in the military, those who walk into that service each day to protect and serve. Grant them wisdom and judgment, strength in duty, and safety in every step. May they act with courage and compassion. We pray also for the children and families in our county as they enjoy the summer special season. May this be a time of rest, renewal, and joyful connection. Watch over the young ones in their place, guide parents in their care, and provide for families in need. Let our community be a place where all children are nurtured and safe. And Lord, we seek your guidance for all who sit in positions of leadership here today. Grant us clarity of mind, humility of heart, and humility of this. May the decisions made in this room reflect justice, mercy, and the common good. Let your word be a reflection of your will, thoughtful, fair, faithful. Bless this meeting and bless this county. We welcome you in your holy name and prayer.
(Inaudible) in the prayer.
(Inaudible)
Thank you, Commissioner Mason. The next item on our agenda is the roll call. If all the commissioners are signed in, if they'll please press their present buttons when it pops up. Report the roll, please, Mr. Whitby.
(Inaudible)
Have one vacancy. Yes, man, there, I think they're trying to fix it. Yeah, 22 present, one absent, Commissioner Jones absent, and one vacant.
Thank you, Mr. Whitby. And we did hear from Commissioner Jones. He's on vacation this week. Next item is the approval of the minutes from the May 12. Commissioner Guffey, any comments or questions about the minutes? Seeing none, if you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed of accepting the minutes, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Mr. Hayes, you're still not working there?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Was that a yes vote? Okay. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
All right, 22 yes, zero no.
Next item on the agenda is citizen communications. We did not have any. We'll move on to communications and messages. A few items. We have one resolution that is pulled. That is Resolution 625-1 under unfinished business, and that request comes from the author of the resolution. We have a request to move one resolution up. That would be Resolution 625-28 to the front of the agenda to accommodate the Murray County Animal Control Director, Kim Raffoff, who is in attendance this evening, to accept the donation of our surplus adoption trailer. If there are no objections, we'll move Resolution 625-28 to the front to accommodate her. I see no objections. We've also have three late filed resolutions to hear tonight. If there are no objections, Resolution 38, 39, and 40.
Chair.
Yes?
Can we get copies?
38 and 39 should be in your packet. 40 may have been left on your desk. Do you know?
Forty was mailed out to every county commissioner last Thursday by the county clerk's office.
So you all, you should have all three of those.
Resolution, Resolution 40 was not received and filed until Thursday. Your packet was mailed on Tuesday. That's why the clerk emailed it out on Thursday.
Can you just tell us what the subjects are of the resolutions?
I'll let Chairman Bethard can do that. Thirty-eight and thirty-nine.
And forty.
Thirty-eight and thirty-nine were in your packets and were included on the agenda, so you would have had those since last Tuesday. And...
Where is thirty-eight? Is it under other or under appropriations?
Appropriations, I didn't see that.
Forty was not in the packet because you got your packet on Tuesday.
Correct.
But...
I could look it up on the screen. I'm going to object to it already.
Well, let's, let's hold up for just a moment here and get our wits about us. I do have thirty-seven and thirty, and forty in front of me, and I do believe forty is the most important of these three. So if there are those who are leaning towards objecting to that one, I would ask that either Jeff or the mayor speak to the, the negative impact that that could have if we don't see that one tonight. Thirty-seven is a resolution reconsidering and withdrawing.
It was thirty-eight.
It's the...
Thirty-eight and thirty-nine.
Oh, thirty-eight, thirty-nine.
Yes, sir.
And I don't have them either, which is odd. I thought I did.
I don't have thirty, agree with that.
And forty was handed to me this morning. Is there someone who could print those very quickly and run them to us?
Well, not quickly, no.
We can...
They're in your packet.
Ah, yes. Okay. I have them both in front of me now. So Resolution 625-38 is a resolution appropriating and amending the 2425 Williamson County Office of Public Safety's budget by $46,595.83 for overtime, supplies, and maintenance of vehicles. Revenues to come from the Tennessee Emergency Management Agency, reimbursements for emergency management assistant to North Carolina and Florida. That's late filed Resolution 625-38. Resolution, late filed Resolution 625-39 is a resolution appropriating and amending the 2425 Sheriff's Office Detention Budget by $500,000 for medical services. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. And then the final one is Resolution 625-40. And if it's okay, I'll have either the mayor or Jeff, whichever wishes to speak to that one and the importance of us hearing that one tonight if at all possible.
Who's going to speak?
I will. Six twenty-five forty was filed as a result of some delays in the purchasing and insuring process in selecting the health insurance, which won't go into effect until January 1. But as part of that process, we discovered that the contract for stop-loss or reinsurance will expire June 31 of 2025. And we need to get the stop-loss in place for July 1 of this year so that we are covered in between July 1 and January 1. But it would be a one year contract. It was bid in the process of bidding the employee benefit insurance, but it was a separate component of that. Property and insurance met, considered those bids, and accepted the Cigna bid for the stop-loss insurance coverage. We need that by July 1. You can hear it tonight. If you do get two objections and don't hear it tonight, the mayor has the ability to call a special meeting to hear it before July 1 so that you can take it up.
So if we don't hear it tonight, we would all have to come to a special meeting to hear it at a later time. Again, hearing it tonight does not mean you're going to vote one way or another. It just means you're going to hear it. And of course, someone could always motion to defer it if after hearing it, you feel the answers you've sought were not completely given. So with that, again, late filed resolutions, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty, do I hear any objection to hearing any one of those?
I object to forty.
Any other objections?
I second.
Okay, we will not hear Resolution 40.
Being that that needs to be heard before July 1, I'm assuming at some point in the
evening, we'll have to find a date and time that works for the majority of the commissioners to hear that one.
We can call it before or after the budget commission meeting on the 20th potentially.
Could we do it on the 20th?
We can do it either before or after the nine o'clock budget meeting. Correct. You could call a special meeting for the same day.
Could we?
But you can't put on the agenda of the special meeting because your rules allow only the consideration of the tax rate and the budget on that June 20 meeting. But you could call a special meeting before or after.
Before or after.
Correct.
Which brings me to the next item on the agenda, which was to remind everyone here that we do have our big budget meeting coming up on June 20 at 9:00 a.m. We'll be meeting in this room at around 11:30, give or take. We'll recess to have lunch at the enrichment center. We'll also be taking our photo at that time, so dress accordingly. And then if the meeting is still proceeding, we'll come back here around the one o'clock hour to reconvene. I don't know if I should just show a hands who wants to do it afterwards or...
No, I think the mayor will make that decision.
Mayor, okay. We'll let the mayor ponder on Resolution 40 and how he wants to handle that one, and we'll move on with the agenda. Lastly, and kind of within the same realm, I wanted to remind all my fellow commissioners of the committee meetings and the importance to attend those committee meetings. This month, we had three fairly important committees that weren't able to meet because they didn't have a quorum. Many of you may know that the chair, myself, I can go and help create a quorum, but only as one person. And in these three instances, my presence would not have helped. There were too many people absent. In addition to those three that did not meet, I did sit in on two where my, one or two where my presence was able to help. Long story short, had I not been able to do that, a vast majority of the committee meetings would not have met this month. And of course, that's where we, we hear the resolutions, we ponder them, we ask the questions, we have the directors there and the other important attendees who can help us understand all the nuances of each resolution. So just a reminder to try your best to attend those committee meetings. Tonight, you'll hear, as we go through these, and I call out the vote of the committees, that there are several that we have no votes on because there weren't enough people to show up to vote. And I believe I have a comment or question from Commissioner Mason.
Yes, Mr. Chair, if I may, update the commission as to the vacancy of District 3.
Yes, absolutely. I'm sorry.
I wanted to make everybody aware that Jeff Graves, his resignation was official as of May 30. So as of June 1, District 3 has been without a second county commissioner. I have spoken to four people currently that are interested in the position. I'm leaving more time open to see if anybody else is interested. However, I have asked the chair if we could put this matter to a vote on our July 14 meeting. So I wanted everybody to be aware of the timeframe and what I'm looking at. I did not want us to appoint somebody tonight because, again, I wanted to give residents of District 3 enough time to come forward if they were interested. And then June 20 was not an option because you can't add anything to the budget. So July 14 would be the next available meeting, and I just wanted to let everybody know that I have asked that it be added to the agenda for July 14.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Mason. If there are no other communications and messages, we'll move on to reports of county offices. Mayor Rogers Anderson.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, let me have Phoebe come up and give us a snapshot of the county.
Am I coming? I believe so.
Let me have Phoebe come up and give a snapshot of the county over the last 30 days.
Good evening, Commissioners. Before I start my report, I would like to introduce two individuals. We have two young adults with us this evening. I have the privilege this summer of having two interns in my department. This will be a first time for me and them. We are learning together. So I would like to introduce Lauren Mitchell. Lauren will be a senior at UT. She is an accounting major and starting her senior year this coming. And Riley Coleman will be a senior in Lipscomb. Both of these are two of our future candidates. So I'd like to introduce and welcome both of them. So with March being one of the largest months in our fiscal year for privileged tax collections, it's not really fair for me to compare this month's collections of April to last month. However, I would like to report that in comparison to this time last year for April of 2024, our collections are within, are in line of what we would expect for the month. April collections this month have been 1,080,000, just a slightly over, and this time last year was 1.1 million. So as you can see, even though they're a little down from last month, which was a record month, we are still in line for the fiscal year. Our education impact fee collections for the month are in excess of 1.7 million, and we did receive another profit this year, this month for the conference center in the amount of $169,103. Each of you have included in your packet budget report for our April as of year-to-date. You can see that our revenues for the general fund, our year-to-date revenues, are setting at about 88.9% of our estimated projections for the fiscal year. Again, this is slightly less than what we, where we were setting this time last year. We are still on target to meet our projections for the fiscal year for the next two months we're looking, we're looking up. So that is all I have for this evening. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to take those at this time.
Any questions for Ms. Riley?
Thank you.
I see none.
Mr. Chairman, we have two other items. One is Matt Largin is going to make a short presentation to the commissioners.
Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Commissioners. Actually, the...
Hold up.
But interns is a great segue into what we're going to talk about this evening. There we go. Okay, great. Thank you. I just want to take a couple of minutes and talk about some of our benchmarks that were developed in concert with the commission in terms of how we're looking at economic development. Now focusing really on our workforce, especially K through 12, and our existing companies as well. And this is a great example of a student who actually went through one of our manufacturing day. We host two of those a year with STEAM Day, with our manufacturers, with our companies involved in science, technology, engineering, and math. And this student was one of four at Fairview High that actually ended up going through manufacturing day. As a part of that, is now going to intern at Horn USA, one of our manufacturers that makes small, small tools in Williamson County. So it's a great opportunity for exposure, I think everybody knows, to that internships are usually two or three month job interviews. And so the more we can do to help our students get connected with local companies, that's really the focus of what we're doing moving forward. And I'll say in addition, before I introduce Nathan, we're actually in the middle of doing an internship survey with all the companies in Williamson County to find out exactly who's offering college interns in particular and connecting those with Tennessee universities as well. So another way we're trying to really create this next workforce, like the accountants we see here, the workforce to supply the needs of our companies moving forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to Nathan. Nathan?
Thank you. Good afternoon, good evening, rather. So I also wanted to share a little bit of a corporate neighbor highlight. So you may recall an announcement in Q4 of '24 that True Green was moving their HQ to Franklin. If you're not familiar with True Green, they are a leader in the residential and commercial turf management space. When companies move to town, whether they're expanding or relocating, we sit and we talk about keys to success. And one of those keys to success is community engagement and investment. And I'm highlighting True Green because I think the bar is in the process of being set in terms of what it means to really engage in the community. So I shared a timeline with you. So again, announce that project in Q4. It's a great project. As you can see, it's 135 new career opportunities for our friends, families, and neighbors with an average salary of 150K. But pretty quickly, and pretty quickly after that announcement, we had some conversation with their CEO and their VP of Corporate Affairs saying, all right, we're here, we're creating great opportunities, but we want to engage in a different way. And so early this year, at their request, we set up meetings. We actually had a whole day with the CEO and the VP of Corporate Affairs. We sat with Mayor Anderson, with Mayor Moore. Our colleague Kel McDowell took them to the state to meet with our state legislatures, all in the spirit of talking and discussing, how do we, how do we contribute beyond the investment they were making with the capital and with the jobs? What does it mean to really live, work, and play here? Those conversations then spun off where we had some more pointed conversations, more strategic, I should say, in Q2. So we got another afternoon, and they sat with Gordon, with Parks and Rec. They sat with leadership from City of Franklin, Parks and Rec, Friends of Franklin Parks, and finally the fair. And so ultimately, all of this is them looking for opportunities to engage. So we're in the process now of packaging up investment opportunities for them, and I think that you can expect to see them engage in a really cool way. So we're excited about that. We wanted to make sure that you were aware, and we figured you would share in that excitement as well. And then, yes, and you're right. So there is, there's a quote. So this came from an email follow-up that we got after our time with the, with the mayors. And I think, you know, my favorite is Williamson County and the City of Franklin are wonderful hands with our elected officials and our business and community leaders like you all. So great project. Wanted to share that with you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate both of you and what you do.
It's ours. Don't give it away.
Mr. Chairman, last thing I'm going to do, and I have never done this, but I'm going to appeal to those two objections and to hear this late file resolution. If you still want us to keep it as late, objecting to hearing it, I understand it. But we'll have to call a special meeting. And let me tell you what's at stake. Our insurance committee met on this last week, Madam Chairman. Second meeting we've had on it. If we should have to go into July 1 without reinsurance, then I've got to buy six-month stability. And that price tag versus a year's price tag is significant in several million dollars. I am glad to postpone this, but I will call a meeting at eight o'clock on the 20th because we have to get something set up. The committee has listened to it. They voted the last, I'll let the chairman speak if she wants to, but we voted unanimous in there to take this action, and we're pushing it forward so we don't get caught in a bind.
So the mayor's... We did vote on it. It was a unanimous vote. This is one that is separate from the medical insurance coverage. Just for those of you that haven't sat in on all the meetings is that we do self-fund our medical insurance. This is not what we're talking about. The committee has voted to engage in an RFP process for a broker to help us negotiate that contract with Cigna for medical coverage. This is the stop-loss renewal. So for any major big claims or anything that comes through, there's a certain point where we're no longer responsible. And so we were provided in that meeting with a six-month time period and a 12-month time period with significant cost savings. Obviously, the longer you go out, the more that you're going to save. And so we did vote on the 12-month, but also with the understanding that the broker that eventually we hope to acquire would also incorporate this into further negotiation. So this is essentially a stop-loss to fill the gap until we get the broker and can kind of negotiate on all fronts while looking at that. So, but it is something that we did talk about, and it's something that does expire. Our current coverage expires June 30.
So for the two commissioners who objected, I will ask if either one of you want to pull that objection. Again, with a reminder that upon hearing it, if this body doesn't feel that all the details are spelled out accurately enough, a motion can be still made to defer it to a later date. But to hear it tonight, I'll ask if there is...
Can I ask the question?
Yes, absolutely. Commissioner Sturgeon?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm just, a big question in my mind, and I'm not one
I'm just, a big question in my mind, and I'm not one of the two commissioners, is why are we?
Pull your microphone down. Pull the mic down.
Okay. In an email with Jeff, he said the last time we approved this was 2019?
2019 and 2021 had variations, yes.
Okay. Well, I think it only just had 2019. So I'm thinking, why are we being asked to approve this? Is it really necessary that the whole commission approve this one insurance contract? Because I don't remember doing this very often.
We don't do it very often, but the entirety of the insurance was bid out. This was a part of that. As a result of that, all of the insurances expire at the relevant timeframe. The stop-loss expires on June 30. The employee benefits expire on December 31 because it's on a calendar year for the health insurance. Stop-loss is on our fiscal year, starting on July 1. When we made the decision to RFP those things, then it led to both of those expiring in 2025. That's why we have to do something with the stop-loss before July 1. We will not have stop-loss after July 1 if we don't act.
So you're saying in the past, the commission has always approved this action?
They've, for multiple years, are for continuing insurance policies. In order to do an RFP to try to save money, the insurance had to be notified, terminated so the RFP could go out. And an RFP was done on the stop-loss. Only one bidder, for lack of a better term, came through with a solid or concrete price, and that was Cigna.
So statutorily, do we have to approve it for you to move forward with this contract?
You have to approve, yes. Yes.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Hayes.
Part of the concern is, again, the RFP process. We've, there's been multiple requests to have a commission-wide meeting to discuss the bids and to have a full transparency and understanding of what were the bids, why did we choose what we chose, et cetera. I know there's been requests of why don't we look at state plans? It's concerning to me when it's a 90, I believe it's a $90 million line item on our budget, that we're just asked to go, okay. And we get no transparency, we get no detail, obviously nothing about scheduling a commission-wide meeting. And I think as responsible fiduciary, we're responsible for our districts and looking out for their tax dollars, and then we're also spending money left and right. It's very concerning to me that we don't have, part of my objection is, we need to have a countywide commission meeting to discuss the benefits, which in turn also had the stop-loss wrapped up in there. And why didn't we start the RFP process for the stop-loss sooner? That was another question I think we had a couple of committee meetings ago when I attended. So these are all questions I'd like to have answered and just better understand. I'm not trying to be obstinate. I do understand what it means, that why we need 7-1 coverage. I just, again, feel like we need more transparency and need to understand. A lot of people couldn't even tell you what stop-loss is in this room because they're not educated. And I think that's the obligation of Gina and you and whoever else is on that benefits committee to ensure everybody fully understands and the money that's behind it. And that's part of my concern and why I would like to have, take a step back and do a closer review. So that was my reason.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
I don't know what to say to her, Mr. Chairman, except the difference in this is two and a half to $3 million. Now, the committee met. You were not at the last one. We went through all this. You're entitled to your vote. But it's nothing I can do between now and 6:20 than hear this. And if something, I will have to call a meeting on 6:20 to get this done because we have to have stop-loss, or we could be looking at some serious claims coming out of our county general funds. It's your vote.
So again, in recognizing the unusual nature of this, and I have been a commissioner for 16 years, and the mayor's right, this is the first time he's ever done this, I will humbly ask if the two commissioners who objected would consider removing their objection.
Thank you. That's all. I've got the report. Diane, if you would set a meeting up for 6:20 at 8:00 AM to deal with this one item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next, we have a school report from Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Jason Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. It is June, and so I will make my comments brief. We are now in summer school, our seniors having graduated the few days before Memorial Day. If you see buses on the road, it's because we have about 1,650 students doing summer school. The vast majority of those, I have chosen that, will be going through that summer school program in June. You may recall a few years ago, two, three years ago, there were some ongoing discussions with the state about the third grade retention law, fourth grade retention law. That's actually stabilized a good bit. We have very few students in that program for that reason, but the state is funding that summer school program. Again, the state is funding that program. It's 100% state-funded. Certainly open any questions you may have about issues that we have coming before you tonight.
Any questions for Superintendent Golden? I see none.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have the hospital report from CEO Phil Mazuka and Mr. Mike Genesey. I think just Mike Genesey is here with Julie Miller.
Thank you. Good evening. Just a couple of quick updates. First, wanted everyone to know that we celebrated EMS Week, May 19. We're excited to celebrate with all our employees. And along with that, we wanted you to know throughout this past year, we have been able to support Williamson County with community events and have EMS present. And we have spent 3,146 hours at different types of community events throughout the year, and we are very happy to do that, and our EMS team enjoys that very much. On my next announcement is, we hate to announce this, but wanted everyone to know that with appreciation, Mike Genesey, who is here this evening, has announced that he is retiring. After nearly four years as our CFO at Williamson Health and more than four decades in healthcare, finance, and executive leadership, he will be retiring at the end of this month. We've tried to convince him to stay with us, but he is ready to spend time with his family. So this will be his last county commission meeting this evening. So I'll let him come and speak for our finances.
Thank you, Julie.
Evening, Commissioners. You guys have the summary sheet, I'm sure, in front of you from stats. As you can see, April was not one of our better months. I think we, we did as well as we could in spite of our decreased volumes. I think we, the tail of the spring break kind of impacted us from a surgical standpoint and so forth into April. So every one of our key stats was negative compared to our average. And when the, when the stats are down, the revenue's down. Unfortunately, expenses don't drop as fast as revenues do. So as you can see there, we had almost 29.5 million in revenue, about 30.8 million in expenses, and we ended up losing $135,000. We did have very, very positive collections. We had 22 days of collections. Actually, for us, it was, we had five Wednesdays this month, which is, Wednesday is our best day from the insurance company. So we generated almost a million, five more in collections than we had the month before. We, we actually burned through about $10 million in cash, and the primary reason for that was we had our annual debt service costs plus our semi-annual interest costs, in the tune of about $8.8 million. And from a debt coverage standpoint, we ended up at almost 2.1. So that's kind of the highlights there. One of the, one of the things that hurts us from an expense dropping as fast as the net revenue, you don't see the charges. We had 104 million in charges this month versus about 98 in the budget. So that's about $6 million. To generate a charge, it takes costs. And with the length of stay going up, the charges went up, and we don't get paid for that. We get paid on a per-admission, so to speak, a DRG payment. So that, that does hurt us. We just have, it's been a little bit more difficult for us to discharge patients, a little bit more difficult to get patients in the hospital from an admission standpoint, from our third-party payers. And I think anybody involved with insurance knows that. It used to be you could admit a patient. Nowadays, they're observations, and we get paid less for that. So, and then, once we get them in, it's a little bit harder to get them out because of the nursing homes, the rehab facilities, and the skilled nursing facilities. So it's just a little bit more difficult for us nowadays. All in all, you know, we lost $135,000. We're still about $500,000 ahead of budget year-to-date. And I believe, I guess I have my numbers in my head, or, you know, we're doing our budget right now, and we're just closing the month of May as well. But I think we, we'll do okay in the month of, in May. So I want to thank you all. It's been great. You guys have been very supportive of us at the hospital, and I wish you all the best. And of course, I wish the best for the county.
We thank you, Mr. Genesey, for all your many years of service for this community.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And Mr. Genesey, if you don't mind, one last thing before you retire, we do have two questions. Can't get away that easy. First question comes from Commissioner Hayes.
My apologies. I got the button. You got it easy. It was accidental. I'm sorry.
Then do I have a, it looks like I may have a question or a comment from Commissioner Petty.
Yeah, I have a comment and a question. Just, this is really minor and just down in the weeds, but on the statement of cash flows, you have the increase and decrease of cash amounts of $10,132,000. And yet, on the balance sheet, it's 13,201. I just wonder why those two numbers don't match. I, I'm not an accountant, so I just looked at it. That kind of stood out to me.
Yeah, that's a, that's a very good question, and I'll have to look at that and see. I don't know the answer to that right now. But it's, if you look at, if you look at the cash on your balance sheet, it's 12.762 million down, and that is the total cash down on the sheet, 12.762. Is that, is that what you're asking me?
Well, I'm just looking at, there's two, I'm looking at the balance sheet. The balance sheet, on the, the column that says increase and decrease of total assets is 13,200,000, but on the cash flow, the, it's, it's, the increase and decrease is 10,000,000. I just wonder why those two numbers are different. I thought they should be the same.
Yeah, I think the cash we're seeing is the operating cash account or the available, total available cash as opposed to the operating cash account. So that's what that is. You'll see.
And then the comment I want to make too, and I understand that we have a major issue with collecting on ambulance service in this county. And I know that you folks are doing a full audit of that, and hopefully that will be done, and we're going to have a chance to look at it, and maybe we can figure out a better way to collect. Because in 2024, for most people don't know it, we billed out 24 million, and we collected seven. And I think we, we need to kind of dig in and see what we can do to help you guys on that, or help us too, because we're paying for it.
No, absolutely. We appreciate that. And we're still in the middle of that audit going on.
Look forward to it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you again, Mr. Genesey. We wish you a long and happy and healthy retirement.
Thank you.
Are there any other department heads wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to elections and appointments. First category under county mayor is the Stormwater Appeals Board. This is a homeowners' association representative, and it's filling an unexpired term that expires in 1 of 26. Mr. Brad Hoot, who is deceased. The nomination for replacement is Steve Westerman. I'll entertain, looks like I do have a motion from Commissioner Steve Smith and seconded by Commissioner Drew Torres. Any questions or comments about the nomination? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor of the nomination, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please. Mr. Whitby?
22 yes, 0 no.
Nomination passes. The next up is the Convention of Visitors Bureau. This is a three-year term, expiring 6 of 28. Term expiring is Commissioner Jennifer Mason. Nomination is Commissioner Jennifer Mason. I have a proper motion made by Commissioner Steve Smith and seconded by Commissioner Megan Guffey. Any questions or comments pertaining to this nomination? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor of the nomination, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
21 yes, 1 abstain.
Motion passes. Next, we move on to the Independent Audit Committee. This is a three-year term, expiring 6 of 28. Term expiring is Carrie Perkinsen. The nomination is Carrie Perkinsen. I have a proper motion made by Commissioner Steve Smith and seconded by Commissioner Drew Torres. Any questions or comments pertaining to this nomination? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor of the nomination, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. And then lastly, we have the Library Board of Trustees. These are three-year terms, expiring in 6 of 28. Terms expiring are Denise Carruthers, Paul Webb, and Rick Moody. The nominations are Jessica Robb, myself, Brian Beathard, and Chip Ramsey. Any questions or comments pertaining to those nominations? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor of those nominations, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
21 yes, 1 abstain.
Motion passes. Moving on to our consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion. A motion made by Commissioner Tonacliff, seconded by Commissioner Guffey. Again, these were mailed out to each of you. Are there any questions or comments pertaining to the consent agenda? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor of accepting the consent agenda, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby. The motion passes. We have no unfinished business. We move on now to new business. We do have one zoning resolution. I'll read the resolution, and then we'll call for any public comments, and then I will read the resolution again for our collective vote. 625-2 is a resolution to amend Article 6 of the zoning ordinance regarding minor site plans. I'll open up the floor to any public comments at this time. Anyone wishing to speak? I see none. The zoning hearing is now closed, and we move on to the vote. Again, this is Resolution 625-2, a resolution to amend Article 6 of the zoning ordinance regarding minor site plans. I have a proper motion made by Commissioner Tom Tonacliff, seconded by Commissioner Lisa Hayes. The Regional Planning Commission was 9-4-0 against. Explanation, please. Commissioner Herbert?
I'm going to call Mike Madison up to explain this better.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm actually going to ask Aaron Holmes to explain this one, but first I'll just introduce him real quickly. So Aaron, many of you already know Aaron, but some of you don't. Aaron is the planning director, having succeeded me in that position. He's doing a great job, and he can address this item.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, Commissioners. Commissioner Herbert, this amendment will require all new uses in the commercial zoning classification to require site plan approval by the planning commission, regardless of the size of the building that comes in, whether it be one, one square foot or 10,000 square feet.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments? I have a question from Commissioner Sanford.
Mr. Holmes, what was the reason for this? Just curious.
So this-
Put your mic down, Commissioner, if you don't mind.
So Commissioner, this came about, the Regional Planning Commission recently looked at two developments in the triune area where they were approved for residential uses. The remaining parcel will be commercial, and we heard concerns from the Commissioners regarding the size of buildings and the impacts those commercial buildings would have on the surrounding area, including infrastructure, roads, and things like that. And based upon the zoning ordinance as it reads now, staff would be able to review and approve many of the site plans because the buildings would be less than 5,000 square feet in size. And so the Commissioners asked us to look at changing the ordinance, and we proposed this amendment where now, regardless of the size of the building, the planning commission will have a review of it if it's approved.
So just to clarify, if something is set in TCA of certain building size, this is saying it still has to go for planning commission?
That is correct, yes. So if it's a new use inside the district, then yes, it would require site plan approval by the planning commission.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I've got a question or comment from Commissioner Drew Torres.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just have a question. Is there a best practice across the state looking at this in terms of a minimum size to force it into the planning commission?
Every jurisdiction is different. There's not a best practice. We chose 5,000 square feet at the time. It was the, what we thought was best for a small, small building when the zoning ordinance was originally adopted.
But now you're asking that everything would go through?
It's in the commercial zoning classification only, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I see none. And if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor of Resolution 625-2, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner Torres? Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
22 yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. The next resolution is the one we are moving up. This is Resolution 625-28. Again, moved it up in the agenda. And this is a resolution to surplus and approve the conveyance of a mobile adoption trailer and authorize the Williamson County Mayor to execute all documentation needed to complete the conveyance. I have a proper motion by Commissioner Tonacliff, seconded by Commissioner Guffey. The property committee was 5-4-0 against. Public health did not meet. Budget was four in favor, zero against. Explanation, please. Commissioner Herbert.
Last month, we received a generous donation from the Enderlees for an adoption trailer and so we are going to transfer our old one to Murray County Animal Control.
Any questions or comments? And does Ms. Rafoff want to say anything or? You don't have to. I don't want to put you on the spot. I know you came a long ways to be here and I just want to give you an opportunity if you want one, but again, I don't want to put you on the spot.
Thank you, everybody, for having me tonight. I just wanted to say thank you. We will put this to good use. We don't have an adoption trailer, so we were thrilled that you would even look at doing that for us. So thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other questions or comments, we'll go ahead and vote. If you are in favor of the resolution, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
22 yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. On to Resolution 625-5, resolution to transfer funds to the Rural and General Debt Service, funds to pay principal and interest on energy systems conservation debt. That debt being $1,163,173.88. I have a proper motion by Commissioner Steve Smith, seconded by Commissioner Drew Torres. The school board was 12 in favor, zero against. Education committee did not meet. Budget committee was 4-4-0 against. Explanation, please. Commissioner Herbert.
This is the school, they're paying the debt on the energy system they have every year except for last year and this is to pay on the interest and principal.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. All opposed, your no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
22 yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 625-6, resolution amending the 2425 general purpose school budget by $900,000 for additional textbooks, textbook expenses. Proper motion made by Commissioner Tonacliff, seconded by Commissioner Steve Smith. The school board was 12-4-0 against. Education committee did not meet. Budget committee was 4-4-0 against. Explanation, please. Commissioner Herbert.
This is the extra amount for the textbooks that they weren't sure when they put it in the budget and they have taken this in consideration when they did the school budget. They had allowed it so that they'd be enough to cover the school budget also. It's just a transfer.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
22 yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 625-7, resolution amending the 2425 general purpose school budget by $150,000 for additional special education expenses. Proper motion made by Commissioner Tom Tonacliff, seconded by Commissioner Drew Torres. School board was 12-4-0 against. Education committee did not meet. Budget committee was 4-4-0 against. Explanation, please. Commissioner Herbert.
It's money to be transferred from one line item. It's for translation services for students and for mileage reimbursement.
Any questions? Looks like I have a question from Commissioner Hayes.
So what exactly does it mean for services rendered? Can anybody provide a little detail? Thank you.
So this is translation services. We had actually included contracted services for translation, but we were actually able to do it out of a different line. So this is moving funding from the contracted services to a different line to cover that. So it's actual, it's actual translation services from different languages.
So it's helping translate school material or is it English speaking class? Like are we trying to motivate them to learn?
Some of it's ESL. It's actually translation services with parents who are sitting in IEP meetings.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Looks like I have another question or comment from Commissioner Sanford.
Just a quick question. If it's translation, everything can be done over on Zoom or online. Why are we paying mileage? Just curious.
Two different items. So what we actually did with that special education service is we had contracted for some contracted services, but found in mapping some of our professionals' work that they actually had time within their professional day to do some of the work that we had actually budgeted for contracted services. Were able to do it cheaper with existing staff, but there was some mileage back and forth over the course of the year from school to school for some of those special education itinerants who moved from school to school.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? I see none.
Thank you.
With that, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor of Resolution 625-7, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
22 yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 625-8, resolution amending the 2425 general purpose school fund budget by $20,000 for additional expenditures from existing revenue funds. Proper motion made by Commissioner Mary Smith and seconded by Commissioner Drew Torres. The school board was 12-4-0 against. Education committee did not meet. Budget committee was 4-4-0 against. Explanation, please. Commissioner Herbert.
This is to pay for building supervision due to some of the churches are using the facilities a lot more than anticipated, but they are paying for it.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
22 yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 625-9, resolution appropriating $700,000 in the 2425 general purpose school operating budget for liability, workers' comp, and property insurance claims. Proper motion made by Commissioner Mary Smith and seconded by Commissioner Judy Herbert. The school board was 12-4-0 against. Education committee did not meet. Budget committee was 4-4-0 against. Explanation, please. Commissioner Herbert.
This is liability, workers' comp- Property insurance costs that have exceeded what the school had budgeted.
I have a question or comment from Commissioner Bill Petty.
Yeah, I'd like a little more explanation of this. I mean, I just don't really understand. These were overages that we had. We weren't planning on. We had no idea they were coming or how did they come about?
Well, that's correct. So thank you, Commissioner, for the question. You basically covered that. When we budget annually, we project out insurance claims are sometimes difficult to be accurate with. So at the end of the year, if we underbudget, we come to you with those claims. So Williamson County Risk Management handles those claims and so each one of those, the workers' compensation, 200,000, building and contents, 200,000, and liability, 300,000, were those items that we underbudgeted not knowing what kind of claims might come in a particular year.
So on the building and content, obviously, we have to pay deductible. Is that what that is then? Is that why we have that?
Well, I may not be the right person to speak to the deductible structure. If I'm not mistaken, I may be wrong about this. Do we have a $100,000 deductible? Thank you. $100,000 deductible. So we're responsible for any claim up to 100,000 and then we have coverage for anything over that.
Yeah, but it's 200,000, so there must be-
Yes, sir. That's the total. It's for multiple claims.
Okay. Okay, each claim. Okay, I got it.
It's not just, it's not just for two claims. It was, it was based on a comparison of our budget to the actual total claims and actual items paid out for those.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I have another question or comment from Commissioner Sturgeon.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm just curious, Jason, do we ever have a year where we don't have a resolution for several hundred thousand dollars for this?
You know, off the top of my head, I can't think. We can get you some information related to that and go back on that, but it does, my recollection off the top of my head is those do occur quite often.
Do you know how much was in the original budget?
I do not. Rachel, you may have that number, total amount in the budget.
Liability was 1.6.
1.6 for liability.
Workers' comp was 1.5.
1.5 for workers' comp.
Building and content was 1.12.
Building and contents, 1.125.
So like four or so, this is about-
So 10, 15, 20%.
25% more.
Somewhere, somewhere around there.
So will we put this in our next budget?
Well, it's hard to predict one year to the next. I will say in next year, we're actually, we know that we're projected to go down in student enrollment of 44 hundredths of a percent. So 0.44.
How many people is 44 hundredths of a percent?
Well, 42,000 students, probably, you know, half a percent for 42,000 students is somewhere around 200, if I'm not mistaken, off the top of my head. And so we've reduced our staffing by 36 employees. So I don't know that we can predict necessarily a claim. You know, sometimes it's a slip and fall, that kind of thing. Those are difficult to predict.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments? I see none. Thank you, Superintendent. And if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor of Resolution 625-9, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote? For some reason, it's not popping up on our screen. Here we go. Again, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
22 yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 625-10, resolution appropriating $300,000 in the general purpose school fund budget from current revenues for related trustee commission. The proper motion comes from Commissioner Steve Smith, seconded by Commissioner Mary Smith. School board was 12-4-0 against. Education committee did not meet. Budget committee, 4-4-0 against. Explanation, please. Commissioner Herbert.
This is the trustee commission and that's where the revenue for the property taxes exceeded the budgeted amount.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
22 yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 625-11, resolution appropriating and amending the 2425 election commission budget by 290,786.83. Revenues to come from the county general fund balance. Proper motion made by Commissioner Barb Sturgeon and seconded by Commissioner Steve Smith. The budget committee was 4-4-0 against. Explanation, please. Commissioner Herbert.
This is due to the state and federal elections and some of the city elections that the amount budgeted exceeded the projections.
Any questions or comments? Got two of them. Question, number one goes to, oh, three. Commissioner Greg Sanford.
Just my question for Chad. Chad, you may have told me this before, but does Brentwood, Fairview, Nolansville, Thompson Station, do they pay into us for hosting these elections or no?
Commissioner Sanford, they do. For instance, the city of Brentwood submitted a check recently in the amount of approximately $45,000 for their standalone election. The smaller cities that hold elections with the November general election, you know, we don't charge them a full amount, but they do have to pay a portion of the costs related to holding their elections.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Commissioner Lisa Hayes.
Hi. Good evening. So election workers, is this, there's four headers, headings. There's temp personnel, part-time, overtime, overtime self-explanatory, and election workers. Are election workers your general staff?
Commissioner Hayes, those are our poll officials. So the ones that work the early voting sites and then on election day at our vote centers are the, are the line that pertain to those.
Okay. So the election workers are just your standard workers at the polls?
Right.
And then part-time and temp? Just trying to distinguish between the three and what they do.
The temporary personnel, for instance, in a presidential year, when we have a large volume of by mail requests that we receive, we have to bring in temporary personnel to work through the, some 2,000 requests we would receive for a presidential election. So those are temporary and then the part-time generally serve on a regular part-time basis, but they're not there every day.
And that's just during election season?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I apologize for going out of order there. I'm sorry. Commissioner Mason.
Just to piggyback, Chad, on what Commissioner Sanford said, are we collecting an appropriate amount from Brentwood, Fairview, Nolansville, Thompson Station to cover the expense or are they paying an amount, but we're still paying overage? How does that work?
Commissioner Mason, the, for instance, I'll just, I'll use the town of Nolansville. For instance, we hold, we have to have a special ballot for those Town of Nolansville residents when they go and vote. So we would, we would keep up with how much that cost and charge them when the election's over. For instance, for the number of by mail ballots that are sent to those Town of Nolansville voters, we charge them based on how many that we have to provide because of their city election.
So these elections with Brentwood, Fairview, et cetera, go hand in hand with an already August or November? These aren't specially set elections that are just City of Brentwood, for example?
Right. Now, the City of Brentwood and the City of Franklin, they choose by their charters to hold standalone elections and they're liable for the total 100-
For the total cost.
For the total cost.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments pertaining to Resolution 625-11? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner Herbert? There we go. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
22 yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 625-12, resolution appropriating and amending the 2425 Health Department budget Department budget by $4,561.33. Revenues to come from donations. Proper motion made by Commissioner Drew Torres, seconded by Commissioner Steve Smith. Budgeting committee was 4, 4, 0 against as amended. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
Okay. I'll do the amendment. We wanted to amend it to include Cigna Insurance Company and St. Paul's Episcopal Church and change the amount throughout the resolution to $13,561.33.
I have a proper motion. Do I hear a second? Looks like I have a second from Commissioner Drew Torres. Is that right?
That was the original.
Or is that the original motion? Did you make a second on the amendment?
Well, the amendment came up, I version it, and I have a second.
Yeah. We'll go with the first one being Commissioner Drew Torres, or the second being Drew Torres of the original amendment went from Commissioner Judy Herbert. Any questions or comments on the amendment? Seeing none, is the amendment loaded?
That's right.
All right. If you're in favor of the amendment, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner Clifford and Commissioner Hayes. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Now, we're back to the main resolution as amended. Again, the resolution appropriating and amending the 2425 Health Department budget now by $13,561.33. Any questions or comments on the resolution as amended? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner Guffey? There we go. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 625-13, resolution appropriating and amending the 2425 Parks and Recreation budget by $250,000. Revenues to come from Parks and Recreation participant fees. Proper motion made by Commissioner Tom Toncliff and seconded by Commissioner Greg Sanford. Parks and Rec did not meet. Budget committee was 4, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is from the Tennessee Renaissance Festival, that when we worked out the agreement with the Freemans, we gave them 25% of the net ticket sales. And it's been a really good deal for the county, and we appreciate the Freemans very much.
Absolutely. I have a question or comment from Commissioner Hayes.
Hi, Gordon. You may not have to walk all the way up. So, the agreement that we have with the Freemans, is that for a period of time, or is that, does that expire, I guess is my question, the 25%?
Yes, sir. The question. So, it is for a period of time at 25%, and then the amount decreases. So, it's for a period of 10 years, but the first five years is at 25%.
So, the first five's 25, and then it reduces to like what?
We start taking off like 5% of time to get it down to zero.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? I see none. If you're ready to vote and you're in favor of the resolution, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 625-14, resolution appropriating and amending the 2425 Parks and Recreation budget by $50,000. Revenues to come from Parks and Recreation participant fees. Proper motion made by Commissioner Steve Smith, seconded by Commissioner Tom Toncliff. Parks and Recreation Committee did not meet. Budget committee was 4, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is for bank fees when the tickets are sold for the Renaissance Festival.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner Petty? Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 625-15, resolution appropriating and amending the 2425 County Commission Tax Relief Budget by $30,000. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Proper motion made by Commissioner Barb Sturgeon and seconded by Commissioner Steve Smith. Budget committee was 4, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is for the tax relief program, and this is to cover where it exceeded the budgeted amount.
And I have a question or comment from Commissioner Mason.
Just a comment. I really like this program. I know we talk about taxes a lot. We talk about property taxes a lot, and this is a program that those that live in our community who qualify, whether they're elderly or disabled veteran or widowed, or I think it's a great program, and I know it's an extra cost on us, but I think it's a good service that we do for the community.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 625-16, resolution appropriating and amending the 2425 Trustees Commission and the respective operating funds. Revenues to come from the fund balances in each respective fund. And you can see the funds there. The proper motion comes from Commissioner Barb Sturgeon, seconded by Commissioner Steve Smith. Budget committee was 4, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is for the trustees commission that exceeded, and it's for the county general fund, solid waste fund, highway fund, and general debt fund.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 625-17, resolution appropriating and amending the 2425 Veteran Services budget by $2,586. Revenues to come from memorial brick paver sales. Proper motion made by Commissioner Judy Herbert and seconded by Commissioner Greg Sanford. Budget committee was 4, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is from the sale of the brick pavers that's in honor or memory of a veteran.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Commissioners, record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 625-18, resolution appropriating and amending the 2425 Capital Projects Fund budget by $160,000 for the prorated distribution. Revenues to come from privileged tax. Proper motion made by Commissioner Lisa Hayes and seconded by Commissioner Steve Smith. Budget committee was 4, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is revenues from privileged tax that goes to the cities and towns who have adopted a capital improvement plan.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner Herbert? Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 625-19, resolution appropriating and amending the 2425 Rural Debt Service Fund by $290,979 for interest payments. Revenues to come from undesignated fund balance. Proper motion made by Commissioner Steve Smith and seconded by Commissioner Tom Toncliff. Budget committee was 4, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is the interest payments on the new debt for the year.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time.
Take a second.
Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
21 yes, 0 no, 1 abstain.
Oh, I see. Yeah. Resolution passes. Resolution 625-20, resolution appropriating and amending the 2425 General Debt Service Fund by $845,269 for interest payments. Revenues to come from undesignated fund balance. Proper motion made by Commissioner Steve Smith, seconded by Commissioner Tom Toncliff. Budget committee was 4, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is the same as the one before for interest payments on new debt, but it's for the general debt service.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner Torres?
Sorry.
That's all right. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
21 yes, 0 no, 1 abstain.
Resolution passes. Resolution 625-21, resolution appropriating and amending the 2425 County Attorney's budget by $170,000. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Proper motion made by Commissioner Lisa Hayes and seconded by Commissioner Judy Herbert. Budget committee was 4, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is for funds for legal expenses that exceeded the budgeted amount, and it's not just for Jeff Mosley. It's also for our attorney that collects the overdue taxes.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner, yep. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
21 yes, 1 abstain.
Resolution passes. Next, we have late filed Resolution 625-38, resolution appropriating and amending the 2425 Williamson County Office of Public Safety budget by $46,595.83 for overtime, supplies, and maintenance of vehicles. Revenues to come from the Tennessee Emergency Management Agency reimbursements for emergency management assistance to North Carolina and Florida. Proper motion made by Commissioner Drew Torres and seconded by Commissioner Greg Sanford. The budget committee was 4, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Sanford.
This is when God deployed staff to North Carolina and getting reimbursed by the Tennessee Emergency Management Agency and Florida, excuse me.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby. I'm gonna do a spot check here. Did anyone, did I miss number 35, or is it later in the packet? It's later in the packet, yeah, absolutely. Okay. Just wanted to double-check there. Resolution passes. The other late filed resolution was late filed Resolution 625-39, resolution appropriating and amending the 2425 Sheriff's Office Detention Budget by $500,000 for medical services. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Proper motion made by Commissioner Greg Sanford, seconded by Commissioner Tom Toncliff. Budget committee was 4, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is for medical and dental services for the inmates in our local jail.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 625-22, resolution to authorize a $12.50 charge by the clerk of every county in Williamson County, every court in Williamson County, having jurisdiction of state misdemeanors and felonies for the purposes authorized and set out in TCA Annotated 40-3-106. Proper motion made by Commissioner Tom Toncliff, seconded by Commissioner Steve Smith. And just as a reminder, this particular resolution will require a two-thirds vote. Law enforcement was 5, 4, 0 against with one abstention. Budget committee was 4, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you. I would ask for General Stacy Edmondson to come to the podium and explain this resolution to the body.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Mason.
This 1250 fund is assessed as court cost, and so defendants who are convicted of misdemeanor and felony charges would be assessed as court cost. It would come through the county, but then, similar to our Economic Crime Fund, when the District Attorney's Office needed to access that fund, we would then go through Ms. Riley's office and make that request. What would happen here is our Economic Crime Fund currently is only assessed on certain crimes. This would apply to every crime that's, except for non-moving traffic offenses. So, it would be assessed on more cases, thereby bringing in more funds that we can use for public safety. Once, or if this is passed, then we would stop collecting Economic Crime Fund money. So, we would not be getting both. And I'm trying to think, restitution for victims would still come out first by statute.
Commissioner Sanford.
General, who sets this amount?
So, the amount was set by the legislature, the state legislature. It mirrors the Public Defenders Fund. They also assess a $12.50 court cost, so it mirrors theirs exactly.
Gotcha. Does this, Jeff, does this body have the authority to raise that or no?
Yeah, can't go above the statutory amount.
Any other questions or comments? I see none. And if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor of Resolution 625-22, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
21 yes, 1 abstain.
Resolution passes. Resolution 625-23, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a 2526 grant contract with the State of Tennessee Department of Health for the provision of dental services at the Williamson County Health Department in an amount not to exceed $175,800. Proper motion made by Commissioner Drew Torres, seconded by Commissioner Megan Guffey. Public Health Committee did not meet. Budget committee was 4, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is a contract with the State Tennessee Department of Health for a full-time Tennessee licensed dentist and dental assistant at the Williamson County Health Department.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. If you're opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. The next three resolutions are kind of tied together. Resolution 625-24, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with the City of Murfreesboro for solid waste management backup services. Proper motion made by Commissioner Megan Guffey, seconded by Commissioner Steve Smith. Municipal Solid Waste Board was 3, 4, 0 against. Budget committee was 4, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is agreement with Murfreesboro to provide backup services to this county and to them. If there is a problem, it's not, it's not every day. It's just for when there's an issue going on. I think with the machinery and that, I don't know if Mac's here.
Yes.
If anyone has any questions, Mac can answer it.
Yeah, Mac is here for these next three, if you have any questions. I've got a couple on the board. Question or comment from Commissioner Williams?
Mac, if you can come up. I'm a little protective of allowing anybody to use our landfill. Under the allowable use cases, how many times would that have occurred, say, in recent years?
None.
Okay.
We've never had an agreement like this. So, we've always been able to do it ourselves, but that's not been very easy. So, having these agreements in place would be if something went wrong. And the way I've asked the attorneys to write it, it would be very, from, if everybody in their department got sick, then we'd send drivers over there to help run their loads. And it's just for what they haul for the residential. It's not for their businesses. So, if their transfer station went down, then they can bring their residential trash to our transfer station. But if their business is, they're on their own.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sturgeon.
Thank you, Chairman. I was just curious, Mac, what initiated this? I mean, was it the other county? Was it us? Did something almost happen, or what?
No, it's, in my previous employment, the city and the county worked very well together. So, if there was any weather event, they had knuckle boom trucks. They're the ones you see go around the neighborhoods, picking up debris and putting it over the back. And the county had roll-off trucks, larger containers. They load the trucks. The roll-off trucks are making circles hauling while that one piece of equipment is still loading more and more trucks. So, it's just something that if, we hope we never need it, but if we had a, you know, a big disaster, then we would want to pull the trigger on that.
And one more question is, how did you decide which entities you wanted to partner with?
Because those are the ones I know, and those are the ones that have the stuff we need.
Ah, okay.
Oklahoma has also the stuff we need, but they're too far away.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Hayes.
Is there a cap? I mean, I'm assuming it's probably going to be a rare occurrence, but what if it becomes like a major problem and they need us more than we need them? Is there any kind of cap?
I would hope they'd need us more than we need them.
Right.
But the way I've asked for it to be written as well is the solid wa, if something were to happen and we needed help.
Yeah.
As solid waste director, I would reach out to each of those solid waste directors and make that request. I'd also let the mayor know that I'm making requests. Then, the mayor, our mayor would reach out to their mayors, and the mayors would have to agree to it. Solid waste directors cannot pull that trigger.
Oh, okay.
We can just aim the gun for them.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I see none. And if you're ready to vote on the first of these three, 625-24, and you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. If you're opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 625-25, also a resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement, this time with the City of Franklin, for solid waste management backup services. Proper motion made by Commissioner Mary Smith, seconded by Commissioner Tom Toncliff. Municipal Solid Waste Board was 3, 4, 0 against. Budget committee was 4, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please. Once again, Commissioner Herbert.
This is the same as the previous one, except it's with the City of Franklin.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby. Twenty-two yes, zero no. Resolution passes. Resolution 62526, Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with Rutherford County for solid waste management backup services. Proper motion made by Commissioner Greg Sanford, seconded by Commissioner Bill Petty. Municipal Board, Municipal Solid Waste Board was 3-4-0 against. Budget Committee was 4-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
Same as the previous, except this is with Rutherford County.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby. Twenty-two yes, zero no. Resolution passes. Resolution 62527, Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a real estate sale and purchase agreement to sell a fee simple and temporary construction easement to the town of Nolansville for the expansion of Sunset Road. Proper motion made by Commissioner Greg Sanford and seconded by Commissioner Tom Tonacliff. The Property Committee was 5-4-0 against. Budget Committee was 4-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is a temporary easement for the construction in the town of Nolansville.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby. Twenty-two yes, zero no. Resolution passes. Resolution 62529, Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a notice of limitation of use concerning the use of a portion of the Osborne Park property for public recreation purposes. Proper motion made by Commissioner Mary Smith and seconded by Commissioner Betsy Hester. Parks and Recreation Committee did not meet. Property Committee was 5-4-0 against. Budget Committee was 4-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is to limit the property at Osborne Park for only public recreation purposes, and that's required in the grant.
And I apologize, I misspoke there. Property Committee did not meet on this one. But the others were all correct. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby. Twenty-two yes, zero no. Resolution passes. Resolution 62530, Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a notice of limitation of use concerning the use of the Castle Park property for public recreation purposes. Proper motion made by Commissioner Judy Herbert and seconded by Commissioner Steve Smith. Parks and Recreation Committee did not meet. Budget Committee was 4-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
It's the same situation as before, except it's for Castle Park, and it's so that it satisfies the grant.
Any questions or comments? Got a one from Commissioner Sturgeon.
Maybe, this is a good question for Gordon. I'm just curious, what does this change from the way it's already being used?
So Commissioner Sturgeon, what this does, it allows us to, you know, complete this administrative process with TDEC, who is the, you know, distributor of this grant. So the property that this covers is the land match, and we currently aren't using it for any purposes at all related to the Renaissance Festival. So what we're planning on doing is, this is the spot that we are relocating, the Triune Riding Club, which we're under obligation to move that to a safer space when ultimately a fire station's gonna be built in close proximity to the existing riding club. So what this does, it just limits the use of this space strictly for recreational purposes. And right now, it's not being used for any recreational purposes.
It's not being used for anything, right?
Yes, it can. I mean, even though the riding club's gonna be there, we can use it for riding events, 4-H events. We can use it to help additional parking for the Renaissance Festival. So anything that has to do with recreational opportunities, we can use it for that. We just can't turn around and use it for non-recreational purposes.
Right. Which really doesn't change the way it's being operated even now, right?
No, actually, you know, it enhances the opera-
It's not gonna impact anybody differently.
It actually guarantees the fact that we are gonna do recreation on that particular piece of property, whereas right now, we're only using like two-thirds of it.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby. Twenty-two yes, zero no. Resolution passes. Resolution 62531, Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with the town of Nolansville for the provision of firefighting and emergency response services. Proper motion made by Commissioner Drew Torres and seconded by Commissioner Barb Sturgeon. Law enforcement was 6-4-0 against. Budget Committee was 4-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you. This is to allow Williamson County to enter into an interlocal agreement with the town of Nolansville for the provision of firefighting and emergency response services if needed.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby. Twenty-two yes, zero no. Resolution passes. Resolution 62532, Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with the City of Fairview for the provision of firefighting and emergency response services. Proper motion made by Commissioner Steve Smith and seconded by Commissioner Barb Sturgeon. Law enforcement was 6-4-0 against. Budget Committee was 4-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you. Just like the similar, or previous resolution, but this is with the City of Fairview.
Any question, Commissioner Greg Sanford.
I have a question for the Director. Should've called you prior to answer this question. So, we need to pay them $250 every time we need them. Are they gonna pay us every time they need us?
So, this agreement is with, of course, the City of Fairview, and the idea is that there are pockets of unincorporated area outside of the municipal limits that the City of Fairview Fire Department is closer to than the Volunteer Rescue Squad is. So with this agreement, we're asking them to take essentially first due or primary response responsibilities for that area. So there are no areas where they're asking us to take primary response. There are no areas that we're closer to than them. These are areas where they can provide a quicker response. So we're essentially asking them to do that, and there's a cost associated with that. So that's where the $250 per call number comes from, which is the FEMA standard rate for an hour of a fire engine, which we've estimated based on prior call volume to be, this agreement with Fairview, to be worth probably about $50,000 a year, which is pretty reasonable considering we really couldn't even hire one full-time person for that amount. So that's the number that we came to.
Thank you.
Sir.
Any other questions? Commissioner Williams.
I know, like, not having fire stations within, I think it's five miles, or it has an impact on home insurance. Does, do these interlocal agreements suffice some of those homeowners' insurance needs from a documentation perspective?
These two agreements specifically do not. These were areas that were already previously covered. Within five miles of a fire station, we are working on, you'll see a resolution tonight for the Triune area where we are making a difference for that five-mile number for residents. And then we're also working on an agreement with the City of Franklin, very similar to these, that would be for AutoAid to cover some areas around Franklin.
Yep.
That we put money in our budget for, but are working to a final agreement with Franklin. So that is something we're working on aggressively as well.
Happy to see that come to fruition, because I know we got some homeowners who'll be affected by it.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby. Twenty-two yes, zero no. Resolution passes. Resolution 62533, Resolution to create a new fire service district in Williamson County. Proper motion made by Commissioner Lisa Hayes and seconded by Commissioner Barb Sturgeon. The law enforcement public safety committee was 6-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you. As alluded to earlier, we are taking three current districts and kinda restructuring them and adding a fourth district, or actually District 20, so we can service additional folks.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby. Twenty-two yes, zero no. Resolution passes. Resolution 62534, Resolution accepting a conditional donation of pet food from Mars Pet Care on behalf of the Williamson County Sheriff's Office. Proper motion made by Commissioner Drew Torres and seconded by Commissioner Mary Smith. Law enforcement was 6-4-0 against. Budget Committee was 4-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you. Mars Pet Care has made a generous donation to donate pet food with an approximate value of $8,400 to our Sheriff's Department for the use for our K-9 officers.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby. Twenty-two yes, zero no. Resolution passes. Resolution 62535, Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a grant contract with the State of Tennessee Department of Finance and Administration, Office of Criminal Justice Programs, and approving a new full-time evidence-based program manager for the Williamson County Sheriff's Office. Proper motion made by Commissioner Drew Torres and seconded by Commissioner Paul Webb. Human Resources was 4-4-0 against. Law enforcement was 6-4-0 against. And Budget Committee was 4-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna ask someone from the Sheriff's Office to come explain this, because they can better explain it than I can. But you'll see in the resolution, the total cost is $912,599, and then it also does not require matching funds, and the position is conditioned on the availability of grant funds. So this is not a permanent position. I'll defer to law enforcement.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'm gonna let Captain Chad Yucor answer this question.
So this grant will provide us programming inside the jail. Along with that programming, we're gonna need to have some managing said programming. So we do have a deputy inside the jail that's gonna take this over, and the grant will pay for such salary and benefits for the life of the grant. We do have it built in already into the description of the job, that once this grant runs out, if it runs out, then the job will go away, and we'll just take that deputy back in the jail and use them somewhere else.
Very good. Any questions or comments? I see none. Oh, wait, sorry. Commissioner Sturgeon.
Sorry, I'm a little slow on the draw. I'm just curious, how much of the $912,000 is for salary, and how much of it is for other items associated with the program? And what is, what kind of programs are we talking about?
I've got Ms. Demetria Corleau here. She is the CEO of Educare. She's gonna be partnering us, partnering with us to provide those, those programs inside the jail.
So it's a, so this money's gonna pay for a contract?
This money's gonna pay for, yes, contracting with...
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you so much for the question. So this money has a contracting portion built into it for Educare to be able to provide the programming in the jail, but it also covers the curriculum, the cost of the salaries for the individuals who are overseeing this program in addition to the supplies.
So, can I ask how much the contract amount is?
I don't have a hand.
Is it at the bottom?
So if you have the grant in front of you, at the very end, there is a chart of the budget. But if not, to answer your first question, the salary for year one is $85,501. Year two will be $94,258. And then the Educare professional fee, year one, is $291,626. And then year two is $288,588.
Thank you. I just didn't catch that on the paperwork, so thank you for...
Absolutely, yeah. It's a very long contract, so...
If you'll stay up for just a moment, I've got another question or comment from Commissioner Petty.
Yeah, I read the contract, too. And part of it is we have to refit two classrooms in the jail. So there's quite a bit, I mean, there's about $75,000 worth of construction that needs to go on in the jail, just to get it ready so we have the proper classrooms and have the splits between the male and the female.
Yes.
And also, I just wanna mention, I went online and looked up this evidence-based program, and I thought I should be in it. It's excellent. One of the things, they have about a 36% success rate, which is not too bad when we have criminals we're dealing with. And one of the things that does, it really impresses me, is it makes people look at their life and figure out what the trigger mechanisms are to make them do the things that they do. They have to really analyze and look at what they're doing, and I think that's just a great idea. And I hope it works. I think it's, you know, it's evidence-based because it's been used all around the country for 30 years. It's not something that just came up yesterday.
Commissioner Hayes.
Thank you, Commissioner Petty, for answering part of my question. I was wondering what the success rate is, so 36%. I personally would love to sit in on it or just learn a little bit more about it. I think this is such an important topic, and I think if you can help people to not recidivate, that's great, and let's get them back into functioning society. Thank you so much. It's a great program, I'm looking forward to it.
Commissioner Tonacliff.
Yeah, my question's for, I guess, Sheriff, would be fine. Are we hiring two new people to do this, or are we just relocating two people?
So Educare's going to provide us with two...
A group facilitator and a clinical supervisor.
Okay, I just wanna, yes. So Educare's gonna provide us two staff members that will be on campus, and then we are going to provide a deputy as well, which all will be paid for by the grant.
Correct. And is that deputy a current employee?
Yes.
And if this grant goes away, will, during that time, will that deputy be replaced?
Yes.
Just explain about the staffing.
Oh, yeah, so, so, yeah, we'll just leave that position open, and then we'll fill her position, and then we will leave a position open in case this grant doesn't go through. We're never at full staff. We've never been at full staff since I've been there, so finding this person a position if the grant falls through won't be an issue.
Thank you. Sheriff knew where I was going. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I see none. Thank you. So if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor of Resolution 62535, signify by pressing your yes button. If you are opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby. Twenty-two yes, zero no. Resolution passes. Resolution 62537, Resolution reconsidering and withdrawing its prior authorization of the county mayor to request a waiver to modify the official county seal of Williamson County. Proper motion made by Commissioner Mary Smith and seconded by Commissioner Sean Aiello. The Property Committee was 4-4-0 against with one abstention. Explanation, please, Commissioner Lawrence.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At our last meeting, counsel gave us an update on our lawsuit with the Sons of Confederate Veterans, and I'm gonna defer to counsel tonight to review that information, which supports the need for this resolution. Counsel?
Yeah, last, last month, we talked about the fact that while we were prevailing in our litigation, the state legislature in the spring of this year passed a law which changed the definition of a memorial to include county seals that depict a historical event. In doing so, what that left was, even if we continued to prevail in the appeal, and one, ultimately, we would still have to go back to square one, file a new petition with the Monuments and Memorials Commission. So the litigation was rendered moot. Subsequent to the last meeting, the Court of Appeals has issued an order finding the appeal and the underlying case moot, and ordering their dismissal. So, in this case, the county commission in July of 2020 authorized the mayor to file that petition. We would have to re-initiate that, and last month, I asked the commission for some direction as to whether or not it wanted that petition re-filled to start that process over again after five years of litigating it the first time. And Commissioner Lawrence asked me to draft this resolution, which would withdraw that authorization to seek a modification of the county seal.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor of the resolution, signify by pressing your yes button. If you're opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. I want to once again remind all the commissioners about the June 20th. Although, stay tuned, there may be an amendment to what time we'll be meeting. That Diane's already telling me to prepare for 8:00 AM on that day as opposed to 9:00 AM. As always, I want to thank the sheriff and the sheriff's deputies for being here. I want to wish all the dads a happy Father's Day, and it looks like I have a question or comment before we close from Commissioner Petty.
Yeah, I just want to make one real quick comment. Earlier tonight, you mentioned that a number of committees didn't meet because people were unable to attend, and, you know, I, I get that. And one of the things you said is that at these meetings, there's nuances. We talk about things, we discuss things, we debate things. And what I'd like to see us start thinking about doing is recording more of these meetings so people have access to that information, so they can look at it later and, and see what was actually being said. So that's just my, just my comment.
Thank you. Any other business to come before this commission? Do I have a motion to adjourn? We are adjourned.